All right, good evening, everyone. I think we will get started. So, welcome to beautiful City Hall in downtown Summerside for our City of Summerside Committee of the Whole Meeting of July 2nd, 2025. For members of the public who are joining in the gallery and online, we have three meetings, all happening tonight sequentially. We'll begin with the planning board meeting, then we, time permitting, we will continue with our Committee of the Whole meeting, and then we have a special council meeting. The special council meeting is scheduled to start at 6:00 PM. So, we will be doing that. We will be starting no earlier than 6:00 PM. So, we'll do the planning board, and then we'll see where we're at, and then we'll either move to the special council or to the Committee of the Whole. With that, I will call our planning board meeting to order here at 5:01 PM on July 2nd, 2025. Call for a motion to approve the planning board agenda as presented from a member of the planning board, Councilor Duran II, Councilor Trenton, all members of the planning board. Happy with the planning board agenda? Please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, changes, revisions? Hearing none, we'll move on. We begin each one of our meeting nights here at the City of Summerside by acknowledging that the land upon which we are gathered is unceded Mi'kmaq territory. Abitibi is covered by the historic treaties of peace and friendship. We pay our respects to the indigenous Mi'kmaq people who have occupied this island for over 12,000 years, past, present, and future. At this time, we'll call for a conflict of interest declaration for any member of the planning board or member of council who has participated in the planning board meeting. Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to item five, recommendation 245 Pope Road, discretionary use. At this point, I'll hand it over to the Chair of the Planning Board, Councilor Duran. Councilor?
Okay, thank you, Your Worship. Yeah, first item, discretionary use application, 245 Pope Road. Purpose of the discretionary use is to allow a crematorium in the service commercial C2 zone. Discretionary use in the C2 zone requires council approval. Crematorium means a building fitted with the proper equipment for the purposes of the cremation of human or animal remains. Background, an application was received from East Prince Funeral Home for PID number 759662 to allow a crematorium as a discretionary use in the C2 zone. The applicant is proposing to construct a 45 by 50-foot building on the subject property. In addition to the crematorium being located in the proposed accessory building, it'll also include two garage bays for vehicles, an office space, a family area, storage rooms, and a washroom. The applicant provided a rendering of the north side of the proposed building, which is included in this report. Under section 5.7 of the zoning bylaw, when reviewing amendments, the following general criteria as applicable must be considered. Under section 8.4 of the Parks and Greenspace Plan, the criteria of B, C, E, G, and H must be considered. So, A, conformity with all requirements of this bylaw. Staff comment, section 5.12 permits discretionary uses subject to the process set out in section 5.10. Discretionary uses in any zone are subject to council's approval. The proposed building and use will conform to the C2 development standards. B, conformity with the official plan. Staff comment, the discretionary use conforms to the official plan as per section 4.1.5. The proposed amendments have no impact on the Parks and Greenspace Plan. And from section, just that section that is referenced is within the official plan, growth management will utilize zoning and development control tools such as secondary plans, variances, development agreements, development charges, site plan approval, conditional uses, discretionary uses, restricted uses, and subdivision powers. C, suitability of the site for the proposed development. Staff comment, the site is occupied by a funeral home and an accessory maintenance building. A crematorium is allowed as a discretionary use, subject to council approval, when it is an accessory use to a funeral home. D, compatibility of the proposed development with surrounding land uses, including both existing and projected uses. Staff comment, the property is zoned service commercial, C2. The surrounding land uses are a mix of industrial, commercial, institutional, and residential. The proposed use is compatible with the existing and future land uses. E, any comments from residents or other interested persons? Staff comment, a public meeting was held on June 3rd, 2025. The public meeting notice was advertised in the May 13th edition of The Guardian. Thirteen letters were mailed to 12 property owners. The applicant, Nancy Hassy and Gary Doucette, provided an overview of the reasoning for requesting the discretionary use and information on the proposed building use and the cremation equipment that will be utilized. Todd Mouse, owner of PEI Cremations in Kensington, noted the cremation equipment will create smoke and odor. Judy Most of Davidson Funeral Home clarified that crematoriums are regulated by the Department of Environment, Energy, and Climate Action. An email from Rick Kennedy, President of Kern and Briggs, representing Advanced Rentals, which is a division of Kern and Briggs, raised concerns on behalf of the Advanced Rental staff. Would the cremation equipment cause smoke and/or odor? Mr. Kennedy's email is included in this report. And a couple other emails had come in to council and staff, and we sort of distributed those amongst ourselves as well. To summarize, basically, they're all just making sure that we do diligence, and they had concerns with odor, so. F, adequacy of existing water, sewer, road, stormwater, and electrical services. City parking and parklands for accommodating the development and any projected infrastructure requirements. Staff comment, the city's water supply and sewage collection system is adequate for the proposed discretionary use. The property has adequate access and parking on-site for the proposed discretionary use. Greenwood Drive and the new signalized intersection at Greenwood Drive and Pope Road is adequate for the proposed use slash development. There's a storm system along this section of Greenwood Drive, as well as an existing ditch system, which provides adequate drainage from the proposed use slash development. The electrical service in the area will be adequate for the proposed discretionary use. Parkland dedication is not required, being as there is no major subdivision of lands. G, impacts from the development on pedestrian or vehicular access and safety, and on public safety generally. Staff comment, there is limited impact on pedestrian slash access or safety, as the proposed discretionary use will create little traffic. Greenwood Drive has an existing average annual daily traffic, or AADT, of approximately 2,800 vehicles per day, 28% of the street capacity. There is a sidewalk and active transportation trail fronting the development along Pope Road and Greenwood Drive. H, compatibility of the development with environmental scenic and heritage resources. Staff comment, the applicant has achieved written confirmation from the Department of Environment, Energy, and Climate Action that a permit to operate the crematorium can be issued once the applicant has been granted the discretionary use by the city. There are no impacts with scenic or heritage resources. I, impacts on city finances and budgets, not applicable. J, other matters as specified in this bylaw, and there are none. And K, other matters as considered relevant. Staff comment, staff contacted two municipalities, Charlestown and Stratford, that have operating crematoriums, Hennessy Cutcliffe, Belvedere, and Hillsborough Funeral Homes. Charlestown staff did not respond to our inquiry regarding complaints for Hennessy Cutcliffe and Belvedere Funeral Homes. Both of these funeral homes are located in residential areas. Stratford received one complaint over the years regarding Hillsborough Funeral Home. This funeral home is located in an industrial area with some residential close by. Staff review, city staff supports the application from East Prince Funeral Home to allow a crematorium as a discretionary use in the C2 zone, subject to the discretionary use being approved by council. As per section 5.10, Part B 3 of the zoning bylaw, the planning board shall make a recommendation to council on this application before it is approved or denied. The planning board recommendation, whether carried or defeated, will be brought forward to council for a final decision. And the planning board recommendation, the application received from East Prince Funeral Home for PID number 759662 to allow a crematorium as a discretionary use in the service commercial C2 zone, be recommended to be approved by council. Moved by myself, and I would ask for a second on the planning board, Councilor Adams. Are there any questions? Deputy Mayor Snow?
Thank you, Councilor Duran. Just, I guess, to cover some of the questions that were in here that maybe, I don't know, were answered necessarily, but there was one in E, and just the ongoing questions around whether or not there will be any odor noticeable to residents in the area. And then, just coupled onto that, under K, it says that there was no, the feedback from Charlestown staff, but that there was one complaint, but there's no reference to what that complaint was. So, if we, either no answers to either of those questions, what complaint was at the other one, and then the odor question, other than that, that's the only two I would have.
The one from Stratford was, it was a complaint over a smoke and odor.
Yeah, I had a couple of calls after the last meeting, mostly in favor of it, but a concern around the odor problem, or odor issue, if there is one. And I see in here, it's the Department of Environment that looks after it. So, what's the procedure if somebody wants to lodge a complaint? Do they go to the city, or do they go to Department of Environment? I just want to get that clarified for them, if there's an issue, yeah.
I would assume their first point of contact will be yourselves or us, as far as the property being located, just like, as far as being able for us to measure, quantify. Smell would probably bring in other departments that oversee that type of situation, and other municipalities for their expertise.
Right. So, if somebody was to contact me, and I contacted the city, would the city be contacting the Department of Environment?
I think it's emissions. I think, I think the Department of Environment, they're basically looking at it from an emissions standpoint, is what's being, emissions into the air, are they safe?
Yeah, so, would, I guess what I'm trying to get to is if somebody calls with an issue, and they're saying there's an odor, how do we deal with it? Do we, is it the Department of Environment that comes up and checks the emissions? Or?
I don't, I don't think emissions and odor are related. Emissions are just, whatever gases or whatever produces that are going into the air, they say they're safe.
Okay, so, if there's, it is an odor, they contact us?
That's, that's what I would understand to happen, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a similar question, but I did say that I would mention it. We did receive an email concerning residents that are in close proximity, and the question that I was asked was basically, such as Councilor McDougall, the question was that if there are odors or emissions, who would be responsible for remediating? Would it be the funeral home, would it be the city, or possibly the Department of Environment? Because the city could be put in a situation where we're playing middle person in something that really might be the Department of Environment situation. So, I'm just wondering, is, could we get an answer on that, to be sure, for those residents in the neighborhood close by?
I'm typically assuming that they're going to call us, and again, trying for us to quantify when, we'll have to be putting the onus on the applicant to say, you know, we're having, I guess, odors coming from your property. I guess we'd know different if I decided to do my own personal composting in my backyard, and it was coming noxious and smelling, we'd be sent out to try and investigate to say, can we smell it? And then we'd be back to the applicant or the property owner to say, can, what can you do to decrease that odor that's coming from your property? And they, we'll be drawn into it regardless, that there are residents in Summerside complaining about an issue, and we'll have to try and figure out as to the source of the odor that's coming from this property, and then, I'm not sure what the remediation methods will be, but we'll be back to the owner and saying, here's where the complaints come in, and what can you investigate and find for possible? And at that point, I guess, we'd probably be speaking to other municipalities that have them, they've had similar, what was the expectation, or what was the result that was able to come out of that, what can be done? I don't know, to find out what can be done to help, I'll say, lessen the effect on the body of property owners.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on what you just said there, so, before we got too far along and then realized, well, there's nothing that can be done, I guess that would be my one and only concern that I foresee now, is if there was a significant odor coming from these type of facility, and residents in the area then start to complain, and if there's no way to rectify or quantify, I mean, I'm, I don't have a very good smeller, but some people can smell a mile away, so, I just wonder what happens or how we do deal with that. I, I think to Councilor McDougall and Coleman's point, I don't want to be painted into a corner where we make a decision without knowing as much information on the outcome as possible, but I don't want to hold it up either. So, I just, I'm a little bit disappointed that somebody from Charlestown couldn't respond, but maybe they were too busy with other stuff, but response on what was, how they're dealing with it in a residential area would have been good to know, or other municipalities.
I guess the other question is if they haven't had any complaints either.
Yeah, maybe, but even that, that answer back would have been good as well, but.
And again, in this location, when we look at the map that's on there, like, directly across the road is the M1, and we're not sure what uses could be proposed or done in the M1 that, you know, as far as to say, this is not a commercial, that was a neighborhood commercial business, and then trying to expand that, like, we're kind of looking at just across the road is the industrial park that probably have a, not saying that some use that was in there, but I don't know what type of stuff could be.
I think this would be allowed across the road, right, in the industrial park, right? So, I've always been sort of thinking along those lines, but now the question's being asked, and we're.
And if we go across the road, we're actually, if you look at the yellow that's on there, that's the residential. If we go across the road into the M1, we're all say closer to the closest residences that are around there. But, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but that's.
No, no, I, I totally get what you're saying. Thanks.
The, the other thing that we did do staff to do, we, we did a research just through Google, whatever, in trying to find out if there was anything, any articles and newspapers in that regard, we couldn't find anything.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, for complaints like through Charlestown or Stratford.
Just a couple of quick comments. I think our zoning bylaw deals with obnoxious use. Yeah, so, we define obnoxious use to mean any use from a land or building because of its nature may potentially, and I'll shorten it, but be offensive by creating odor, so that, an objectionable odor, so there is, yeah, we do have enforcement powers, I think it would be, I don't know where it would be in our zoning bylaw, I don't have all that in front of me. So, there would be a potential avenue if there was obnoxious use, obnoxious odors to the residents, I think. And then also, again, this is probably more of a question for legal, but we have a nuisance bylaw as well, so, legal could give information as to whether odor constitutes a nuisance, and I could have given that information to you 15 years ago when I was in law school, and I'm sure we dealt with it, but I would surmise that it does, generally, but it seems like we do have a couple of avenues to be able to address if there is an issue, just sharing that information.
Okay, and just, there was a one or two resident concerns that came in from Greenwood Drive, which is directly south of, of the property. Again, just sort of concerns about possible odors. And so, I, I contacted a couple of residents on Pope Road, a couple that I typically sort of deal with on a regular basis, friendly. I just wanted to ask them if they had ever had issues from, like, GFL, formerly Superior Sanitation, like, if they ever had, you know, when the wind's blowing from the south, any issues of odor from there, and they said no, so, it's sort of similar, a little, a little further away from, from the residents in question, but sort of the same idea, wind blowing from the south. I mean, that's a, and that's a huge, you know, dump, basically, so, I just wanted to sort of get that inside look at, at any experiences that they may have had, and they, they've said that they haven't had any issues, so, yeah, so. If no one, no one else, we'll just.
I, I'll ask a question.
Oh, sorry. Brad?
I'm just curious if Linda, or if anybody has ever called to complain about people that burn wood in the wintertime? Has the city, to your knowledge, received calls on that?
Yes, we have.
You do get them?
Yep.
But there's.
I think it was, sometimes it was either smell, or some people, it was smoke, if they were, someone was, I'll say, asthmatic, or they felt that the air quality or something does, or sometimes, it was just certain times when, I'll say, it was a cloudy day, and the smokes were all just going down low and not going up.
If it's low pressure, it doesn't, it doesn't rise as well as, yeah.
But, but I guess, similar to, if Stratford had have called us, where they had one complaint, we would have said, yeah, we had a couple over our ears, that's not, yeah.
Because it would be, and I, and I don't know this to be factual, but I suspect that, and there's, there's a fair number of people that still burn or heat with wood, and that that would be, in my mind, a much larger issue than what we're dealing with here.
Yeah, and I don't want to, just exclude it to, or just to the wood doctor, Eric Dorlins, there has been, just in the regular chimney as far as, we had some people that had the actual unit that was outside, and.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, so, we'll proceed with the planning board vote, and again, this will go to full council later shortly this evening. So, again, this was moved by myself and seconded by Councilor Adams. All members of the planning board in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, so we will revisit this shortly with all of council. Next item, recommendation for a major variance floor area for 226 Commerce Crescent. The purpose of the variance is to allow for an increase to the building floor area of an accessory building. Background, the city received a building permit application from Paul O'Rourke to build an accessory building at 226 Commerce Crescent, PID number 313015, containing a two-car garage with workshop, with a floor area of 84 square meters, 900 square feet, 24 by 37 and a half feet. Paul O'Rourke is asking to vary the accessory building floor area a variance of 50%. The bylaw states a maximum floor area of 55 square meters or 600 square feet, and a 10% lot coverage for all accessory buildings. While the proposed building floor area exceeds the allowable floor area size by 50%, the proposed building size meets the 10% lot coverage for accessory buildings, 84 square meters, and the lot area is 886 square meters. So, the site plan is indicated there in the back right corner of the property. To process a major variance more than 10%, subject to council approval, the development officer shall provide written notice to all assessed property owners within a radius of 30 meters or 98.4 feet from the subject lot, describing the variance sought, and inviting written comments within seven clear days. The application is reviewed by the planning board. The planning board makes a recommendation to council, and council may approve, deny, or approve a variance less than requested. Report, under section 7.2 of the zoning bylaw, variance applications shall be considered by council, planning board, or the development officer as applicable, against the following tests for justifying a variance. All applicable criteria must be met. A, that the hardship is due to unique physical conditions of the lot or property, including small lot size, irregular lot shape, existing building location on the property, or exceptional topographical conditions which make it impractical to develop in strict conformity with bylaw standards. Exceptional topographical conditions may include, but are not limited, to trees, slope of the land, et cetera. And the staff comment, yes, this variance request would meet this test. And it sort of stops there, but just a bit of a typo, the existing lot, I don't think is, I don't think those words are necessary, I think they were just pasted in, so, yeah, yes, this variance would recreate, would meet this test. B, that the proposed variance meets the general intent of the official plan. Staff comment, yes, this variance request would meet this test. The variance meets the intent of the official plan, including sections 3.5 and 4.1, that speak to functional growth and development control. C, that the proposed variance meets the general intent of the zone. Staff comment, yes, this variance request would meet this test, and accessory building is a permitted use in the R3 zone. And D, that the proposed variance would not impact negatively on adjacent properties or on the essential character of the surrounding neighborhood, including taking into consideration any comments from neighbors. And staff comment, yes, this variance request would meet this test. 14 letters were mailed to 10 properties within 30 meters of the boundaries of the subject property. Comments from adjacent property owners were due on or before June 25th, 2025. No written comments were received. Staff review, city staff support the application for a 50% variance to accessory building floor area. As per section 7.3 of the zoning bylaw, the planning board shall make a recommendation to council on this application before it is approved or denied. The planning board recommendation, whether carried or defeated, will be brought forward to council for a final decision. And the planning board recommendation, the application received from Paul O'Rourke to allow an accessory building floor area of 84 square meters or 900 square feet, resulting in a 50% variance, be recommended to be approved by council. Moved by myself, and I would ask for a second on the planning board, Councilor Trenton. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, we will proceed with the planning board vote. All members of the planning board in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, so we will revisit this later this evening as well. Next, mobile sales establishment application for 474 Granville Street. The purpose of the application is to allow a mobile sales establishment, treat rods to operate at 474 Granville Street. Background, the city has received an application from Samuel McNeil requesting approval to allow a food mobile sales establishment, treat rods to operate at 474 Granville Street, PID number 864645. Weather permitting, the proposed hours of operation are 11:00 AM to 8:00 PM, Monday through Saturday. And you can see the site plan there, it's in the eastern end of the parking lot at Canadian Tire, across from where Tim Hortons is, basically, along Granville Street. Mobile sales establishment means a business located in a motorized vehicle or movable structure that is towed or moved by a motorized vehicle, and where all of the goods, wares, or foodstuffs that are offered for sale are contained entirely within the motorized vehicle or movable structure, but does not include a lunch truck. Report, under section 3 of the City of Summerside Licensing Bylaw, CS21, the bylaw states the following. Mobile sales establishment license, A, any person or company seeking a license to operate a mobile sales establishment in the city shall make application therefore to the council. B, licenses may be granted for a mobile sales establishment to conduct business on a maximum of two locations in the city, and each application shall be accompanied by a letter of permission from the owner or owners of the property on which the mobile sales establishment will be located. C, council shall allow or refuse the application based upon considerations of safety, desirability, impact on established businesses in the city, public convenience, and such other considerations as it deems appropriate. D, council may attach terms and conditions to the approval of the license if granted, including, but not limited to, hours and days of operation, health code requirements, litter control, or approved locations. E, the license for a mobile sales establishment shall be valid for the calendar year in which the application is made only. New application is required to council for each calendar year. And F, no appeal shall lie from a decision of council respecting a mobile sales establishment license. Staff comments, Mr. McNeil has obtained a written letter of permission from the property owner, Canadian Tire Real Estate Limited. The placement of the mobile sales establishment does not impact the required parking for the retail store. And the recommendation, staff support the city granting a mobile sales establishment license to the applicant, Samuel McNeil, as this property is zoned service commercial C2, which allows retail businesses as of right. The planning board recommendation, whether carried or defeated, will be brought forward for council for a final decision. Planning board recommendation, the application from Samuel McNeil to allow a mobile sales establishment, treat rods to operate at 474 Granville Street, be recommended to be approved by council. Any member of the planning board like to move the recommendation? Councilor Trenton, and second, His Worship. Any questions or comments? Councilor Trenton?
Yeah, I think, of course, this is about a mobile, a mobile ice cream truck, so you know I'm already in favor from the get-go, I love that. But, my concern, I guess, is, just in regards to the location, it's right close to Granville, and we know it's high traffic. As a part of the conditions, could we, I just, I just know with young ones, and darting and running around, is it possible as a condition to put a fence there, or how would that work? I, I can see playing it without a fence being there to protect the public.
I think they're just going to set up a food truck, and.
And if I've been in this lot, this kind of, it's a built, I'll say, more parking than was required for the store. And they're kind of got being down in the, as we can see, the southeast corner. The only people, yes, there may still be most food trucks if he was driving up and having children, but I don't think we ever made them fence off an area for a, for a temporary food service, but the.
No questions on the request, more so just in the thirteen. I, I thought that we had changed that any future requests, as long as there was no issue, didn't have to come back to council. Is that accurate, or we just talked about that, or?
Renewals. If somebody was up and had one going, if they come back the following year, there's no issue, we would not have brought it back.
Yeah, so, so in here under E, it says a new application is required to council each calendar year. So should that change, I'm just, it's just a wording thing for me, but should that, that change to the city or to staff?
That would change, this is quoting out of the licensing bylaw, that this is the only section that we have in our department, the licensing bylaw, that was put forth as far as for whenever that bylaw gets reviewed, that that, those changes would be, would be in there. But the direction given was in the interim, staff bring new ones to you and renewals with no issue, just process.
Perfect, yeah, I just. Okay, perfect.
Okay. We'll just carry on now with the planning board members. All in favor on the planning board, please indicate by saying aye. Aye opposed. Hearing none, we will be back with this one later on as well. Next, preliminary subdivision approval, application for seven twenty-five Cardinal Street. Purpose, subdivide a portion of PID number eight three six two nine six to create seventeen lots for residential use, labeled lot twenty-four dash one to twenty-four dash seventeen on the map below. Before the development can proceed, the planning board is required to make a recommendation to council on this application, and preliminary approval is required by council. Background, an application was received from Travelers Rest Mini Homes Limited to subdivide this parcel to build a street, extend municipal services, and create fifteen lots, lots twenty-four one to twenty-four seventeen, intended for manufactured homes. The proposed subdivision layout is indicated on preliminary survey plan prepared by Locust Surveys Limited, drawing number two four zero two nine dash P zero one dated July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. Report, as required under section three point six of the subdivision and site development bylaw, council, planning board, and the development officer shall consider the following general criteria when reviewing development applications under this bylaw as applicable. A, conformity with this bylaw. Staff comment, the subdivision conforms to the site development and subdivision bylaw. The subdivision layout promotes smart growth, making effective use of the land, and applies to the principle of orderly and following. The development will be subject to city standards. B, conformity with the official plan. Staff comment, the subdivision conforms to the official plan. The future land use map designates the property as residential. The proposed subdivision and proposed housing types align and support the residential policies of the official plan, including to promote all housing types in the city and to encourage high-density housing. Section three point four focuses on promoting sustainable development with policies that encourage a range of housing types and encourage building up the pathway slash trail and park system. This proposed development aligns with the section where it's increasing density and providing a range of housing forms. The official plan has a section dedicated to complete streets with policies and objectives focusing on developing an active transportation plan and improving bicycle and pedestrian circulation. We currently don't have a policy or plan regarding these topics, so we fall to best practice, where the development and its roads will majority, majority serve local residents only. Having separate pedestrian or cycle paths may not be necessary or fiscally sustainable. C, conformity with the zoning bylaw. Staff comment, the proposed lots conform with the development standards of the manufactured home park residential R five zone. The proposed lots, manufactured homes, conform with the zoning bylaw. The land was zoned manufactured home park residential R five in twenty twenty-one. D, the orderly and following nature of the development. Staff comment, this development will add to Summerside's housing stock. This proposal follows the natural progression and expansion of development for the area and is following the planned expansion to Summerside's infrastructure. E, physical suitability of the site for the proposed development, including avoidance of natural hazards, undue water runoff, or environmental damage. Staff comment, the site is suitable for development. The developer will be responsible for avoiding natural hazards, water runoff, and other environmental matters, if necessary. Stormwater will go to the existing ditched storm along the existing trail and eventually into a city-owned system. F, compatibility of the proposed development with the present and future surrounding patterns of streets, lots and services, including conformity with any city concept plans. Staff comment, this development is compatible with the existing and future street patterns and future development of surrounding properties. The proposed street and services are required to extend to the extents of the proposed development to allow further development on the lands west and east of the proposed development. G, adequacy of the applicant's proposals for traffic circulation, parking, pedestrian access, water supply, sewage disposal, and storm drainage, including the adequacy of city streets and services to handle increased loads. Staff comment, this development will connect the existing stubbed street, Cardinal Street, to the east-west connector street currently being constructed. Active transportation connection is possible along the east-west housing corridor, Cardinal Street stub to the active transportation path and sidewalk system currently being constructed on the east-west connector. Stormwater will go to the existing ditched storm along the Confederation Trail and eventually into a city-owned system. The city has adequate water supply, sewer collection, and treatment for the proposed development. A few changes will be required for the engineering drawings regarding sewer main and water main installation to the end of the current phase, and the water main installation needs to be tied into the existing city water main on Cardinal Street. Hydrant locations and stubs for future connections can also be discussed at engineering drawing design time. H, suitability of parkland provisions. Staff comment, parkland dedication is required for a major residential subdivision. Council may defer all or a portion of parkland dedication. Parkland fees will apply to lot twenty-four one to twenty-four seventeen and the remainder of the property. At council's discretion, the parkland dedication shall be ten percent land or three thousand five hundred and fifty dollars per acre for high-density residential and seven point five percent or two thousand six hundred twenty-five dollars per acre for medium-density residential. The parkland dedication requirements are as follows. Phase one, which is five point two acres, medium density, and that works out to zero point three nine acres or thirteen thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. And the remainder of the parcel, fourteen point eight acres, also medium density, works to be one point one one acres or thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And fourteen point three acres, high density, is one point four three acres or fifty thousand fifty dollars. In total, two point nine three acres of land is required or a hundred and two thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. Currently, the developer allows the city to maintain and use trails, a portion of the Sugar Bush Trail in Rotary Park, located at the north end of the subject property. The Parks and Green Space Plan identifies this north portion of the subject property as a future green space, the Rotary Park Extension six eight five. The developer is proposing to satisfy the parkland dedication for phase one and the remainder of the parcel by means of a land dedication of four acres, which is an additional one point zero seven acres than required to expand the Rotary Park. I, impacts on city finances and budgets. Staff comment, when Cardinal Street was originally constructed, it was not built to the property line of the subject property. The developer is requesting the city pay the cost to extend Cardinal Street, the street only, from the existing stub of Cardinal Street to the boundary of the proposed subdivision, proposed Street A, in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. It has been city practice to cover part or all of the cost for street extensions in similar cases. J, proof of conformity with any applicable provincial legislation and regulations. Staff comment, the developer shall conform with all provincial requirements as applicable. And K, other matters as considered relevant. Staff comment, the developer will be responsible for obtaining permission from the province to construct a stormwater outlet to the existing Confederation Trail ditch system. Staff review, staff support the application from Travelers Rest Mini Homes Limited, requesting to grant preliminary subdivision approval to subdivide PID number eight three six two nine six, creating the remainder of PID number eight three six two nine six and seventeen residential lots, lot twenty-four one to twenty-four seventeen, be recommended to be approved by council, subject to the following. One, the developer shall satisfy all municipal servicing requirements. Two, the developer enters into a subdivision construction agreement. And three, the developer shall satisfy the parkland dedication requirements. As per section eight point five of the subdivision and site development bylaw, the planning board shall make a recommendation to council on this application before it is approved or denied. The planning board recommendation, whether carried or defeated, will be brought forward for council for a final decision. Planning board recommendation, preliminary subdivision approval be granted to Travelers Rest Mini Homes Limited to subdivide PID number eight three six two nine six, creating the remainder of PID number eight three six two nine six and seventeen residential lots, lot twenty-four one to twenty-four seventeen, with streets and servicing be recommended to be approved by council, subject to the following conditions. One, the developer shall satisfy all municipal servicing requirements. Two, the developer enters into a subdivision construction agreement. And three, the developer shall satisfy the parkland dedication requirements. Move, that part of the recommendation moved by myself, and I would ask for a seconder on planning board. See his worship. Do these separately or just? There's, there's also the recommendation for the cover, city covering the cost to extend Cardinal Street. Those are the two recommendations for a part of this application.
You want to read them? We've read the first one in already.
First one's been read in. And the second one, planning.
Sequential votes. Just have separate votes.
Separate, yeah, separate votes, okay. Planning board recommendations for the second one. The city cover the cost of extending Cardinal Street from the existing stub of Cardinal Street to the east boundary of the development up to fifteen thousand five hundred dollars be recommended to be approved by council. Moved by myself and seconded by a member of planning board, who I would ask councillor Trenton. So going back to the first recommendation, the preliminary subdivision approval. Any questions or comments? Councillor Adams.
Thank you. I just have one. So just for anybody watching, the road Cardinal will connect or will not connect to the east-west corridor.
Cardinal will connect through this development to the east-west.
It will.
On the sketch that Linda has up there, the red piece is being built as part of the east-west.
Okay, perfect.
So east-west, the stub street, we call it, this red one has already been brought over to the start of this property. And the blue would be built by the developer. And the per and the fur, right with the hatching there, that would still be built by the developer. That's the, the second resolution that's before this. So they will have a connection to the east-west through this property that's being developed. They will also have one at the top as well. We had planned for.
Yes.
Okay, just so we're, that's about two more now.
The newer upper part, yeah. So Cardinal, the width of Cardinal, is it the standard that it has to be at for the, the traffic that's going to be? Because it's a dead end now, right?
Yeah, it's, the existing Cardinal is probably only six meters wide with a grass shoulder. The new part will be our, our city standard that's wider with a curb. And he intends to keep the right-of-way a little wider than he has to because this is bringing in modular homes, and he wants the freedom to be able to not be on somebody's property to make those maneuvers, trying to get those into the units. So he's going to provide a wider than necessary right-of-way. But the standard, I think it's eleven meters wide, so two lanes wide and one lane parked with Kirby.
So it, but nothing's going to be done to the current part to widen it?
No, unless the piece we're talking in the, I'll say, the black hatching would be widened in transition from, right now it's six meters to taper that out to get to eight point eight, eight point eight meters wide, so basically a meter wide at each side.
Okay. I do have a little bit of concern that we're not doing the whole little stretch. I did, I realize there's a cost to it, but, I mean, it's, you're, it's going to only get more and more all the time, right? We're starting at seventeen now, but I believe we had approved for like seventy-five or something eventually, right?
Yeah, I think we'd done those. In the calculations for parkland dedication, we had reviewed.
Yeah. I guess I would just request that that road be, be monitored maybe for something in like the next budget, just to keep an eye on it for safety concerns. Because, you know, it's used to being a dead-end street, plus we're going to be putting seventy, seventeen, plus it's allotted for up to seventy-five there. Plus, you're going to have the people coming in off the east-west corridor into Woodridge that way. I, I just, I wish the whole street was being locked ash. I don't know. Is there anything like? Like, I guess we did, we have such issues up there with traffic now and small. And there's no, there's not a sidewalk. Where does the sidewalk end when you're coming up small?
I think it gets to the trail.
The trail, so Cardinals, two streets up from the trail?
Yeah, what's on the, Linda updated there, the, the wider white one on the bottom is the trail. So one's, yeah, Tooth, Nightingale, and then the next one is Cardinal.
Yeah, so we have two streets where we have no shoulder or no sidewalk either. It's just like a, a grass shoulder, and here we're, we're drawing more traffic into the area as well. I, I do have a concern that we're not looking at the whole bit of widening Cardinal and what that's going to mean also for the sidewalk on, on small. It just seems like we keep adding and adding, but we're not or adding to the sidewalk, the sa- the safety portion really isn't. I completely get the widening at the end to allow for the mobile homes to come in. But saying that, they'd probably be coming in the corridor since it's wider anyways, so I do, I do have a concern with that one.
Thank you, councillor. Sort of half on the curious, I'm trying to put, I guess, everything together here. The Cardinal, the current developer was not the original developer of Cardinal, of course, right? They had nothing to do with the original construction of Cardinal. Okay, yeah, I was just saying, I was, my concern was going to be if they originally created that road and then didn't do the stub and then asking us to.
Yeah, the upper part that they were involved with was all, they've done private developments, private streets farther north.
Farther, yeah.
I can't tell you who done the lower.
I just want to make sure they didn't put in the original street and then coming back saying, can you please finish the street I didn't finish? But, and then secondly, it says, there was something in here, and I was just trying to find it, but it said, we usually either cover the entire cost or cost share. I'm wondering if there's some sort of formula that we could cost share and then also address councillor Adams widening of the shoulder. I don't know cost-wise, I'm just sort of throwing something at the wall here. But if there's a way to sort of help the developer with that stub, maybe not pay for it all, but then in turn find a way to widen that road within that budgeted amount, we'd sort of be able to do both things and.
Yeah, we'd have to get, get back to you what the, what the overall cost is from. That fifteen thousand was just in the piece, that's great there. If you go back to the other map there, Linda, we can see that to get its quota distance into, they'll say, the existing small. So that little, that's a bigger, obviously, that's fifteen thousand built there. It's a bigger number to get into the, into there. The developer also wanted us to, when we, when he proposed that, we said, well, right now I'm required to give, for this little phase, I'm required, I'll say, very little amount of parkland. For the entire development, I'm required three, but I want to give you four. So he said, I want that considered when I'm asking for this here, is I want to give you an extra acre up on the top right now. That was his saying. We can go back to the cash value, what that was related to. He said, look, I'd sooner give you the four with this majority, what's treated, and we have current trails on. And you want that for consideration compared to his ask of the hundred percent of the road versus the fifty percent.
Yeah, no, it sounds good. I was just wondering, cost-wise, what Kerry's request makes to him and over-
Yeah, we would have to go back and figure out an update from what would be from there back to small.
Right, okay, thanks.
My light might be hiding, maybe. Thank you. I guess just in terms of, I think, supporting Counselor Adams, and in our official plan, I think it speaks to this. So, when we have, it's section five, sorry, we don't have it, but it's section five fourteen, it's the east-west connector, and there's a number six point says, council shall prioritize pedestrian and active transportation-friendly designs that provide convenient crosswalk connections throughout, but here's where it's important, and connections with local street patterns, so it does seem like there's, I guess, some room there within our official plan, when we're looking at the east-west housing street, housing corridor, to include that active transportation or pedestrian safety on it, but also connecting throughout to the local street network, so I would just say that does seem to support the notion that something, it's in our policy, I guess, in our official plan. And the only other point I have is, I'm just, and I think the Rotary Parks are great, like, I think it's in our Parks and Green Place Plan, like, I think it fits perfectly. I've just done a little summary there, trying to determine where the nearest park is, I mean, like, a playground park in the area, and thanks to, well, Counselor Cameron doesn't know this, but we were trying to think, what's the distance between park from where you have to be to a park and residence? And so, we kind of struggled to find, but I recently found that for a mini park, it's four hundred meters, so I took that, and that's in our Parks and Green Space Plan, so looking at what parks are near the subdivision that's planned, the closest park would be the Wilmont, and that's only if you use the Confederation Trail, and that's like seven twenty, which you know is not open all year, so it brings closer parks to over a thousand meters, and the space that is right now being identified is almost a thousand meters away at nine twenty-five. So, I just say that in terms of, if this does get approved, I think, looking at where could a park go in this area that's a mini park, unless I could be totally missing something too as well.
Sorry, I get, go ahead.
There is a, I mean, it's not our park as a city's, but there is a park within Woodridge itself, and I don't know if that affects the distances or not, but there is a playground within that area already.
I don't know how that fits with the whole.
Yeah, because, as I said, the entire Woodridge area above, other than some of the smaller stuff at the bottom, is all one parcel and all owned by one landowner, as far as, which, as you mentioned, in some of the areas, they've identified a few small mini parks within their development. He had mentioned, the other comment he had mentioned was the pedestrian, and we are bringing the active transportation in on the stub off of east-west to this budding property, so on the red stub road, we are bringing the active transportation off of east-west in as far as to connect to there, and as far as the costs and stuff in on everything further to the east, this developer does not own that land, so we're asking him to go in and update or expend costs on land that he doesn't own as far as upgrading, although Counselor Adams suggests that we monitor it once it gets developed and consider it for our own budgets within our own, because we technically own that rest of Cardinal to the right. The developer is open to looking at their reviews, what, when they get their costing in, what they can do. They're thinking they may, if they can fit it within their budget, they may put the active transportation along the horizontal part of what's blue, and move it forward on their own, just for their own residents, that they feel that they want to provide that above and beyond what's required in our standard. So, they said we would consider looking at, again, they're just pricing up their work right now to see if this gets through, if they can build it, and when they get the pricing in. So, they've identified on their plan where, the cross-section where it would fit, so they're considering that themselves, and going beyond what they are required to do based on our current standards, so, but we are bringing it to match our official plan, to say we're bringing it above the existing future developments.
No, thank you, appreciate that.
Super quick question. So, what's the requirement to send letters to nearby residents with this one? There's none because we already did the rezoning?
They get notified whenever there's a rezoning happening, and then as far as a subdivision, it just goes to planning board and council, yeah, not a special council meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. That stub property on Cardinal Street, I know, you know, with the parkland dedication and that, it's all, but who owns that? Does the city own it? How, why would the city own that piece that's not a street? Was that through?
We got turned over all the existing, I'll say, community or right-of-ways, whenever that was developed. When we say that, the water has been extended closer than the pavement, they're not gonna need to bring the sewer in, and they're not gonna bring storm in, so this is the component of, they just basically stopped paving once they got, and built into the last driveway back, and I'll say, let's say nineteen sixty-five or seventy when it got built.
Right.
That's why our rules say we bring it to the end of the lot you're developing in our rules, to make sure we don't end up with these small little sections.
That, you answered my next question, so that's what I always thought we were gonna get started with.
We always bring them to the end to avoid these. We've had a number of them in our time here, that someone's taken over a subdivision that's thirty years old, and the asphalt didn't get built to their property line, so.
But normally, they're built out, right? So-
To the ends of developers, yeah.
So, the other question is, there's no more of these stubs in the subdivision, because we've got a lot more property to develop?
No, this is the only connect, this is the connection to this subdivision.
Right.
And the top one will be, Linda, we'll go back one page there, we're doing the east-west ourselves over, and there's no other connections to the right or the existing subdivision.
Okay. We just bring it to the-
Yeah, we're bringing, everything that's in red is all one parcel, and we're bringing it to the bottom, to that, we're bringing it right to that road that's right there, so that we can connect on the top half, we'll say.
There's no road there now, though?
Correct.
Okay.
There's no road, yeah.
Okay.
Back when they did that red, the top section, in my time, or in the last fifteen years, we already had the east-west secondary plan that said this road was go-through.
Yeah.
So, that developer left a hundred-foot road right-of-way, that's why there's no units there to allow for a longer connection, we wouldn't have to be moving units or debating, so they left a hundred-foot gap, and our east-west project is gonna connect right over to that little-
Okay, thank you.
I can't think of the name. Yeah, that, we're making the connection onto, sorry, Cardinal.
Cardinal.
But he's gonna have another access through the east-west, he'll have two accesses that are there to east-west, but we want that connection there on Cardinal to-
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, that's fine.
So, the cost, yes, to clarify, it's not for the full gamut of a typical street.
No.
The other services are there, they brought them over, they just didn't pave all the way to the end.
Okay, thanks.
So, in theory, he could develop this area and not pave that anyway, is what you're saying, Linda?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, okay, gotcha.
Yeah. We have a connection up at the top, and we have two connections out of here to, yeah.
Good.
One quick question, the bottom of proposed Street B, that cul-de-sac to city standards?
Yes, there's a certain distance that you can go to, and-
So, a school bus will be able to turn around?
Yeah, that'll get into the design, I just say, school bus, garbage truck, fuel trucks, our own snowmobile gear.
This may be a question for Counselor Adams, but Cardinal, do school buses run on Cardinal, or is Cardinal one of, because I know Woodridge has, Bruce, your mic's on there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I know residents in that area have struggled with access to school buses, because school buses can't turn around in some of those narrower streets, so just to Counselor Adams' point, I just think it's sort of join the chorus there in terms of whether monitoring, or if the developer is looking at extending the active transportation, the sidewalk from the red to the existing Cardinal, you would certainly expect that children will be walking out of, which is good, now that I don't have to get a drive to catch the school bus, will be certainly walking to get the school bus, because the school bus will turn in that cul-de-sac.
I'll clarify what he, we haven't seen them yet, he was still gonna cost it, he was gonna bring it at least to his north-south one, which was to allow his future, as you go north, everyone to walk down and be able to get onto that connection. He didn't commit to going all the way to the existing Cardinal, but he hasn't.
And I guess just for me, a concern being, there's a lot of children live in that neighborhood, they would then be walking in the mornings, because they, school bus can't access their houses, they would be walking presumably to that intersection there.
Okay. If no one else, we'll go back to the original recommendation first, which is just for the preliminary subdivision approval, and again, that was moved by myself and seconded by Mayor Kutcher. Members of planning board in favor say aye, aye, opposed, Counselor Adams. So, that will proceed to council later on with the recommendation of planning board, and the second recommendation, which is for the city to cover the cost of extending Cardinal Street from the stub to the east boundary of the development up to fifteen thousand five hundred, and that was moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Trenton. Are there any comments or questions on that recommendation? Hearing none, all members of planning board in favor of the covering the cost, which is typical, as we described earlier, members of planning board say aye, aye, opposed, and there are none, so that will go with the recommendation of planning board as well. I believe this is the last or second-to-last recommendation of our planning board this evening. Application for parking relief, sixty-seven Central Street. The purpose of the application is to seek parking relief at sixty-seven Central Street, PID number three one zero five five seven. The property is zoned high-density residential R four. The city received a building permit application for sixty-seven Central Street to convert the existing five-unit apartment building into a ten-unit apartment building. Per section ten point five, the required parking for this development is one space per unit, so ten parking spaces. The applicant is proposing five parking spaces and is requesting parking relief of five spaces by means of section ten point six, optional off-street parking. The report under section ten point six of the zoning bylaw, for any development requiring six or more parking spaces, an applicant can elect the voluntary option by making a submission to council for less spaces. Please see the request from the applicant below, following the excerpt of section ten point six, and I will read that request when we get there as well. Section ten point six, optional off-street parking requirements. A, for any development requiring six or more off-street parking spaces according to the normal standards under section ten point five, other than in the downtown D-zone, an applicant may elect the voluntary option of making a submission to council for less spaces compared with that normally required. B, applicants under the voluntary option shall present appropriate justifications for reduced parking requirements, such as references to corporate practices, actual needs estimates, or comparisons with existing businesses. C, council may allow all, some, or none of the applicant's requested reductions for off-street parking spaces compared with normal standards, subject to application of all other bylaw requirements. And D, any applicant under the voluntary option cannot subsequently apply for a variance on parking for the same development. The request from the applicant, the applicant is Kathy Gittaree and Vincent McCray. Thank you for considering our submission of the parking site plan for sixty-seven Central Street in Summerside. Please find below details explaining our plan for the building, details of the tenants who currently make sixty-seven Central Street their home, and our plan for future occupancy. Our goal for the building is to include smaller, more affordable units that target a lower-income population, hopefully creating more affordable housing for those who are having difficulty finding and maintaining a home of their own. These populations would include possibly seniors, students attending the local college, and adults requiring government-funded programs. On the first level of our tentative plan is to have five small units. The first unit is being designated for a senior, mother slash mother-in-law, who no longer has her driver's license and no longer has a vehicle. It will be a one-bedroom with single occupancy. The remaining units will include three small bachelors, single occupancy only, and a small one-bedroom loft. On the second level, there are two one-bedroom units and a small bachelor unit, these units are all occupied. The existing tenants don't have vehicles, and two of them don't have their driver's license. Two of these tenants are low-income, and the third gentleman is on government assistance. On the third level of the building, there is a young couple, and they have one vehicle. The second tenant in that apartment does not have a driver's license. Currently, there are four units occupied and one vehicle on the property. All tenants will be subject to a twelve-month renewable tenant agreement in accordance with I RAC Rentals Division regulations, and with parking expectations clearly highlighted in the Schedule D additional terms and conditions. The property is situated on Lower Central Street in the heart of Summerside, allowing our tenants to be close to all the amenities they may need within walking distance, taxi or biking. As noted, we are hoping to support our community population who are without means to purchase a vehicle, who are away from home, studying to provide themselves a brighter future, and those who are struggling with a lower income by providing small, more affordable units. All things considered above, although the proposed parking site plan has ten available spaces, there will be significantly less parking spots required than the number of units proposed for sixty-seven Central Street. This remains consistent with our goals of providing homes for lower-income populations now and into the future. We ask for your consideration in developing the property and operating with less parking stalls than normally required. Thank you for taking the time to review and consider the possibilities of developing this beautiful old building. The staff review, the applicant's request to reduce the parking from ten onsite parking spaces to four aligns with the long-term policies found in the official plan. Section three point five of the official plan speaks to creating walkable neighborhoods, a compact and complete community, and housing affordability and diversity. Section ten point six of the zoning bylaw was put in place for applications such as this. An additional consideration is the location. The property is located adjacent to the downtown zone, where only zero point five spaces per unit are required, and there are several municipal parking lots located nearby. For those reasons, staff support the request to reduce the onsite parking. As per section seven point three of the zoning bylaw, the planning board shall recommend, shall make a recommendation to council on this application before it is approved or denied. The planning board recommendation, whether carried or defeated, will be brought forward for council for a final decision. The planning board recommendation, the request from Kathy Gittaree and Vincent McCray to reduce onsite parking from ten spaces to four spaces at sixty-seven Central Street, PID number three one zero five five seven, be recommended to be approved by council. Moved by myself, and I would ask for a secondor, planning board, Counselor Adams. Any questions or comments? Linda?
Just, that's a typo, that should say five spaces from ten.
Five spaces, from ten spaces to five spaces, so fifty percent.
So, Linda, if this property was one street down, it'd be the allowable amount of parking spaces, correct? Because it's point five in the downtown, so it's just because it's a street up that we're, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, maybe, yeah. It's very close, I guess.
Counselor Dron. Yeah, Aaron, is there street parking allowed on Central Street in that area?
I couldn't tell you for sure, but I just know that sometimes with our winter clearing, there's off-streets, again, I don't, but I think there is on-street parking, but it can't be guaranteed all year round, or like-
Yeah.
Just for reference, this is sort of the block between the library and Central Street Church.
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm not sure if there's parking on that side or not, but anyway, it's just that on-street parking is a concern, because we just had an area that had eleven vehicles in the driveway and three in the street, so.
Okay, see no more lights, we will move into the planning board vote, Counselor Adams.
If you look on Google Maps, there are no, on the posts, there's no parking signs along that side of the street, so, yeah, be welcome.
So, the parking sort of, there's on-street parking in front of the library, so after that street, it stops. All right, we didn't vote yet, no, no. We were interjected. So, members of planning board, in favor, please say aye, aye, opposed, and there are none. So, that is it for the planning board meeting of this evening, I will hand things back over to Mayor Kutcher. Counselor Dron, can I have the, sorry, secondor on that last one? It was moved by myself and seconded by Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Counselor Dron, so we'll adjourn our planning board meeting here of July second, two thousand and twenty-five. For those who are joining us in the gallery and online, we are now moving into our special council meeting, which was scheduled to start at six P M. I noted at the beginning of our meeting here this evening, we would not start before six P M, and we started at six ten, so we're pretty good. So, I'll begin by calling to order the special council meeting here of the City of Summerside for July second, two thousand and twenty-five, here at six ten P M. This is for all of council. Call for a mover and a secondor to approve the agenda as presented. Counselor- Counselor Snow, second Counselor Cameron. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, changes, revisions, hearing none, we will move on to item three, conflict of interest declaration. Any member of council have a conflict of interest with respect to any item on the agenda? Seen, hearing none, we'll move back to you, Counselor Duran, to proceed with the reading of a series of resolutions in relation to Planning Board matters.
Okay. Thank you again, Your Worship. First item, restricted use application for three thirty Central Street. The City of Summerside has received a restricted use application from Boys and Girls Club of Summerside for three hundred thirty, three thirty Central Street, PID number three zero eight seven eight three. Yeah, this application will require city council approval to allow a family emergency center as a restricted use in the medium-density R three zone. The family emergency center was designed to support up to five women-led and children families at one time. The zoning bylaw does not have a definition for a family emergency center. The application was advertised in the June fourteenth edition of The Guardian, and letters were mailed to property owners within sixty meters or two hundred feet of the subject properties. An explanation of the process, in order to process a restricted use, the following steps are required. Step one, the restricted use is read at a public meeting, and that is taking place this evening. Step two, Planning Board reviews the application and prepares a recommendation to council. Step two takes place at a Planning Board meeting. And step three, the restricted use is read to be adopted by council. The resolution will be either carried or defeated by vote of council, and step three takes place at council's second meeting. Please note that in accordance with section five point two zero of the city zoning bylaw, any person who is dissatisfied by a decision of council in respect of the administration of this bylaw may appeal council's decision within twenty-one days to the Island Regulatory and Appeals Commission. Question, comments and questions, there's two sections to this, we'll invite the applicant to make comments. Adam Minkley, Executive Director. Caitlin Rockford, hope I said that right, definitely didn't, because she's shaking her head. Lifehouse Manager. Shelby Petrie, Outreach Coordinator. And there's more information on the next two pages, so if any one of the applicants or representatives of the applicant would like to make comments, now's the time, and then we'll invite public. I'd like to get that last name right, though. Rochford. I was gonna say that, okay. Rochford? Roachford, not even close.
First, emergency center, and I'd like to, of our partnership and by, it's absolutely horrific that those numbers are that high, but it's remarkable that we're able to provide housing, support services, programming for children, youth with BGC Prince County, and on and on and on. Unfortunately, in two thousand and twenty-four, we had to turn away eighty-seven families. So eighty-seven women and children were turned away. Those families did check all the boxes and could have had housing at Lifehouse, but were turned away due to lack of space. At the same time, we have a ten-unit transitional housing that has been in operation since October. Limited number of families, we're turning away many families, and then we're disrupting those families being able to get the transitional housing and the twenty-four unit. So, over a year ago, we purchased three thirty Central. Originally, it was for the purposes, we would like to open a daycare as part of the Lifehouse model. That's one missing piece that, that we have with Lifehouse. And at the same time, the province and BGC Prince County partnered in Kensington, where we've opened a brand-new BGC Kensington that includes a daycare. So, we love taking risks, and we'll do whatever we can to meet needs, but opening two daycares at the same time, we thought was a little much, so we are concentrating on Kensington. And then obviously, with those stats from two thousand and twenty-four, all of our attention is to try to solve the issues and the needs of housing for women and children for the emergency center. So we're proposing to turn three thirty Central, which, in my opinion, is better suited for the emergency shelter than a daycare. And we're proposing that we're able to get zoning, so we're able to open up a second emergency center. And Caitlin and Shelby are here for any of the tough questions.
Okay. Mayor Kutcher.
Yeah, questions from members of council, I don't have any.
I don't either, I'm, it looks, looks great to me, and I'm glad that there's, I shouldn't say I'm glad that there's a demand, I'm glad there's an avenue to, to address the demand.
Just quickly, the fact that, and I'm correct in saying that letters were mailed to neighboring properties, that sort of stuff, correct? The fact that we're sitting here tonight with the request for a family emergency center, and there's nobody, I don't think, and maybe I don't want to speak too quickly, but it doesn't look like there's anybody in the gallery, or I don't think we've heard any negative or feedback from residents in the area. The fact that we're sitting here tonight with that, I think speaks volumes to the work that the Boys and Girls Club has been doing previously in this type of area, and how successful they've been to make sure that not only they meet a need, but do it in a way that sort of aligns with the neighborhoods they're doing the work in. So, I speak to Adam regularly, and, and I just, I guess want to congratulate him on the great work that he's been doing, and the entire team, because I know it's not just, I know that for a fact, so.
Shelby and Caitlin did go knocking on doors today. I think the only question that was brought to my attention was the original, what happened to the daycare? But obviously, that's been put on hold unfortunately because of the huge need. And then, some questions are, why is BGC doing housing? But we've, we've learned, and we've learned quickly, that by providing housing, it allows us to connect with higher-risk children and youth. So, the children and youth that come with mom to, to Lifehouse are integrated into our programming, which is absolutely amazing, and we're very proud of that. And that's why we did go, you know, primarily in the direction of housing was for that, and it definitely is serving its, its purpose, and we're reaching our goal. With a second emergency facility, that means more families and more children, youth are receiving supports.
Anyone else? All right, any members of the public, any comments or questions, or if not, we'll, we'll move forward. Actually, that's the end of that. Yeah, we'll get to, we'll get to it now. Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero seven one. Moved by myself, and I would ask for a second or anyone on council. Deputy Mayor Snow. Whereas an application, this is the same one, Red Sands Properties? No. Yes? This is totally different, this is not the, no. So that'll go to, yeah, so that'll go to the Planning Board meeting, which, we'll get the dates.
This resolution is from a previous planning board for one forty-nine.
Yeah, 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 no, I, yeah, I just, for some reason, thought we were getting right into this one, but yeah, no, so, so meeting number two of three will be on this, on the Lifehouse resolution, will be our next Planning Board meeting. We'll, we'll publicize those dates as well, so. Now, moving into the next item, which is Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero seven one. Whereas an application was received from Red Sands Properties to build an apartment building, four units, at one forty-nine Central Street, PID number three one one three six five. And whereas section seventeen point five of the City of Summerside zoning bylaw states a year, a rear yard setback of six meters or nineteen point seven feet is required, and section ten point nine C of the City of Summerside zoning bylaw states that a parking area for an apartment building shall not be sited within three meters or nine point eight feet of a habitable room. And whereas section seven point two of the zoning bylaw allows for a variance to be granted after council has considered the following tests. A, that the hardship is due to unique physical conditions of the lot or property, including small lot size, irregular lot shape, existing building location on the property, or exceptional topographical conditions, which make it impractical to develop in strict conformity with bylaw standards. Exceptional topographical conditions may include, but are not limited to, trees, slope of the land, et cetera. B, that the proposed variance meets the general intent of the official plan. C, that the proposed variance meets the general intent of the zone. And D, that the proposed variance would not impact negatively on adjacent properties or on the essential character of the surrounding neighborhood, including taking into consideration any comments from neighbors. Be it resolved that council grant a rear yard variance of seventeen percent and a parking area setback from an apartment building of fourteen percent. This application bears the recommendation of the Planning Board meeting of June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. And that was moved by myself and seconded by Deputy Mayor Snow.
Thank you, Counselor Duran. Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero seven one, moved by Counselor Duran, seconded by Deputy Mayor Snow. He's on the floor, further comments, questions, statements from members of council? Seen and hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, the resolution is carried, Counselor Duran.
Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero seven two, whereas an application was received from East Prince Funeral Home Cooperative Limited for discretionary use for PID number seven five nine six six two, to allow a crematorium at two four five Pope Road in the service commercial C two zone under the City of Summerside zoning bylaw. Be it resolved that council approve discretionary use for a crematorium at two forty-five Pope Road, PID number seven five nine six six two, in the service commercial C two zone under the City of Summerside zoning bylaw. This bears the recommendation of the Planning Board meeting of July second, two thousand and twenty-five. Moved by myself, and I would ask for a member of council to second it, Counselor Cameron.
Thank you, Counselor Duran. Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero seven two, moved by Counselor Duran, seconded by Counselor Cameron, is on the floor. Any further comments, questions, statements from members of council? Seen and hearing none, we'll call for a vote, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it, Counselor Duran.
Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero seven three, whereas an application was received from Paul O'Rourke to build an accessory building floor area of eighty-four square meters or nine hundred square feet at two two six Commerce Crescent, PID number three one three zero one five. And whereas section eight point four of the zoning bylaw states an accessory building cannot exceed a maximum floor area of fifty-five square meters or six hundred feet. And whereas section seven point two of the zoning bylaw allows for a variance to be granted after council has considered the following tests. A, that the hardship is due to unique physical conditions of the lot or property, including small lot size, irregular lot shape, existing building location on the property, or exceptionable, or exceptional topographical conditions, which make it impractical to develop in strict conformity with bylaw standards. Exceptional topographical conditions may include, but are not limited to, trees, slope of the land, et cetera. B, that the proposed variance meets the general intent of the official plan. C, that the proposed variance meets the general intent of the zone. And D, that the proposed variance would not impact negatively on adjacent properties or on the essential character of the surrounding neighborhood, including taking into consideration any comments from neighbors. Be it resolved that council grant an accessory building floor area variance of fifty percent. This application bears the recommendation of the Planning Board meeting of July second, two thousand and twenty-five. I would invite a member of council to move that motion, I've done a lot tonight, I'd like to spread it around a bit. Counselor Morrison, and second, Counselor Trentholm.
Thank you, Counselor Duran. Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero seven three, moved by Counselor Morrison, seconded by Counselor Trentholm, is on the floor. Comments, questions, statements from members of council? Seen, hearing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, Counselor Duran.
Four more. Yeah. Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero seven four. Whereas Samuel McNeil is requesting council approval in accordance with section thirteen of the licensing bylaw, CS twenty-one, to operate a mobile sales establishment, Treat Rods, at four seventy-four Granville Street, Canadian Tire Real Estate Limited, is the property owner. And whereas section thirteen of the licensing bylaw provides that council shall allow or refuse an application based on the following considerations. Safety, desirability, impact on established businesses in the city, public convenience, and such other considerations as it deems appropriate. Be it resolved that council grant approval to Samuel McNeil to operate a mobile sales establishment, Treat Rods, at four seventy-four Granville Street, Canadian Tire Real Estate Limited, property owner. The license is subject to the following conditions. Paying a license fee of five hundred dollars for a local business as per licensing bylaw, CS twenty-one regulations. A food health permit is approved by the province. Litter disposal containers are provided on-site. Hours and days of operation, eleven A M. to eight P M. daily. Letter or letters of permission from property owner or owners for proposed location, and connection of any pipe, hose, et cetera, to the city system requires city approval. This bears the recommendation of the Planning Board meeting of July second, two thousand and twenty-five. And I would invite a mover and a second. Deputy Mayor Snow, and seconded by Counselor McCollman.
Thank you, Counselor Duran. Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero seven four, moved by Deputy Mayor Snow, seconded by Counselor McCollman, is on the floor. Further comments, questions, statements from members of council? Counselor Snow.
Just curious of hours and days of operation. Is that their time, or is that our timeframe for any food trucks?
It's pretty standard, I think.
It's ours? It's their request? So if they wanted to stay open later by having this in the resolution, does that limit them to that? And I'll, I guess I'll tell you why, as somebody that runs a tourism operation within the city. One of the main complaints that I would get from people visiting our city is the eight P M., everything seems to shut down. So I, I just, as a, I would like to see, start seeing our operators extending those times, so I just, I want to make sure we're not doing anything that'll limit that in any way by having that in there. And maybe as a city, start encouraging the other operators around the city to start extending hours, because we've had a couple of really busy weekends here with a lot of tourists in town that are having a hard time finding a place to eat after eight P M., and we have a lot of great food establishments in the city that I think should be encouraged to stay open a little longer. So I'm sort of blending my own personal thoughts on something, but I, I found this was a good way to put it in there, and we can go from there. So, I, I, that's sort of a question, are, are we anyway limiting their ability to stay open later by having that in their resolution?
That's the hours they requested, that's the hours for four, you want to make an amendment to say further at, front back?
And if that's what they request, I'm fine, I just, yeah, I just, maybe it was just not good for me, maybe.
Yeah, just to clarify for the record, nope, just, because we didn't have your mic on there, Director. That was, the application was for eight P M.
Yeah, yes, the applicant's request.
Could I just add something, we're not in a debate mode, I know, but, um, no, I was just thinking, I, I think most operators, if the revenue was there and the business was there, they probably would choose to stay open. Many times, there's just one or two people operating that food service, and it's trying to have staff to cover up expenses over revenue kind of thing, but it's a good idea. Maybe you'll go.
Yeah, we're not debating this right now, I don't think it's a good idea.
Any further comments, questions from members of council? I guess Deputy Mayor Snow, you're not proposing an amendment to the resolution, you're just raising the issue. Okay. Seen, hearing none, call for a vote, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is carried. Counselor Duran, over to you for the next resolution.
Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero seven five. Whereas a request was submitted by Kathy Gittaree and Vincent McCray to reduce the required off-street residential parking spaces for a ten-unit apartment building at sixty-seven Central Street as per section ten point six of the zoning bylaw. And whereas the parking requirement as per section ten point five of the zoning bylaw for an apartment building is one space per dwelling unit, resulting in a requirement of ten off-street parking spaces. And whereas section ten point six, optional off-street parking requirements states the following. A, for any development requiring six or more off-street parking spaces according to the normal standards under section ten point five, other than in the downtown D-zone, an applicant may elect the voluntary option of making a submission to council for less spaces compared with that normally required. B, applicants under the voluntary option shall present appropriate justifications for reducing parking requirements such as references to corporate practices, actual needs estimates, or comparisons with existing businesses. C, council may allow all, some, or none of the applicant's requested reductions for off-street parking spaces compared with normal standards, subject to application of all other bylaw requirements. And D, any applicant under the voluntary option cannot subsequently apply for a variance on parking for the same development. Be it resolved that council Be it resolved that council, as per section ten point six of the zoning bylaw, reduce the residential parking requirement for onsite parking at sixty-seven Central Street, PID number three one zero five five seven, from ten spaces to five spaces. This bears the recommendation of the planning board meeting held on July second, two thousand and twenty-five. I would ask for a mover from council, Counselor McCollman, and a seconder, Counselor McDougall.
Thank you, Counselor Duron. Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero seven five, moved by Counselor McCollman, seconded by Counselor McDougall, is on the floor. Further comments, questions, statements from members of council? Seeing and hearing none, I will call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the resolution is carried. Counselor Duron?
Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero seven six, whereas an application for a major subdivision was received from Travelers Rest Mini Homes Limited to subdivide a portion of PID number eight three six two nine six, creating seventeen lots, lot twenty-four one to twenty-four seventeen, intended for manufactured homes. The proposed subdivision layout is indicated on preliminary survey plan prepared by Locust Surveys Limited, drawing number four, uh, two four zero two nine dash P zero one, dated July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. And whereas in accordance with section three point six of the subdivision and site development bylaw, council shall consider the following general criteria as applicable: conformity with all requirements of this bylaw, conformity with the official plan, conformity with the zoning bylaw, the orderly and following nature of the development, physical suitability of the site for the proposed development, including avoidance of natural hazards, undue water runoff, or environmental damage, compatibility of the proposed development with the present and future surrounding patterns of streets, lots, and services, including conformity with any city concept plans, adequacy of the applicant's proposal for traffic circulation, parking, pedestrian access, uh, water supply, sewage disposal, and storm drainage, including the adequacy of city streets and services to handle increased loads, suitability of parkland provisions, impacts on city finances and budgets, proof of conformity with any applicable provincial legislation and regulations, uh, and other matters as considered relevant. Be it resolved that council grant preliminary subdivision approval in accordance with section eight point five of the subdivision and site development bylaw to Travelers Rest Mini Homes Limited to subdivide a portion of PID number eight three six two nine six, creating seventeen lots, lot twenty-four one to twenty-four seventeen, as shown on preliminary survey plan prepared by Locust Surveys Limited, drawing number two four zero two nine dash P zero one, dated July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, subject to the following conditions: the developer satisfied all, the developer satisfies all municipal servicing requirements, the developer enters into a subdivision construction agreement with the city, and the developer shall satisfy the parkland dedication requirements. This bears the recommendation of the planning board meeting held on July second, two thousand and twenty-five, and I would once again ask for a mover from council, or questions, comments?
First move and second?
First, we'll ask for a mover, uh, from council. Uh, Counselor McDougall, seconded by Counselor Cameron.
Thank you, Counselor Duron. Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero seven six, moved by Counselor McDougall, seconded by Counselor Cameron, is on the floor. Further comments, questions, statements from members of council? Counselor Adams, give your light.
Can I request that this be tabled?
So if you, uh, want to table the resolution for a future date, uh, you would, uh, call, ask that it be tabled, and it would be put to a vote, uh, for members of council. Members of council may recall that, uh, once there has been a move to table a resolution, uh, there's no further debate or discussion on that. So Counselor Adams, if that's what you're moving?
Yes.
You would need a seconder, and then we put it to a vote. Okay, so we have a motion to table the resolution, uh, by Counselor Adams, seconded by Counselor McDougall. So I'll call on council to vote on the motion to table the resolution, um, first, so Counselor Adams? Oh, yeah, you're already raising your hand on the vote. Um, so I'll call for a vote. All in favor of the tabling of the resolution, please indicate by saying aye. And against, opposed? The nays, the nays have it by one, two, three, four, five, six to two. So the resolution is still on the floor, so, um, open to statements, comments, questions from members of council. Counselor Adams, your light is still on?
Um, yep. Okay, so, um, I guess we all know how I feel about this one. So I don't think we've looked at, I understand that we're, we're looking at it as it's another way out, but I don't think we're looking at the traffic that it's going to get coming in as well, off the corridor, um, of people trying to access Woodridge. I think we're making more of a problem in an area where residents say there already is a problem, um, the bus route, and so on, they'll, um, and we haven't, that I know, I haven't heard anything about what impact this will have on small. Um, there's a sidewalk issue there, there's a speeding issue there, and I'm not even sure what the, the lay of the land is there for runoff and so on. Um, if we're going to make one end, one little bit at the end wider, and then it's going to come in, is that going to impact those houses on the end that have been, uh, dead end for decades now? And all of a sudden, they're going to have it widened out and everything pushed back onto their property? So there's, there's several issues that need to be addressed, really.
Counselor McDougall? Yeah, uh, the issue, or I, I guess the question I have is, uh, around that stub. So if the developer is putting in the new, the extension to Cardinal, not the piece that we were responsible for, uh, it has to be curbed and, uh, under their development,
Built to City Current Standards.
Right, so when we put in that piece, how, how far is that? Is that fifty feet?
Or?
Seventy feet?
Less, probably.
Probably?
Less.
Okay, so does that have to be curbed too?
Nope.
How come?
We need to get the full width of, I mean, if the water's going to flow there, we'll be looking at issues, but, uh, and I say that, the...
Yeah. No, I'm just, I'm just wondering, because we're requiring developers to do it.
Yeah.
And we're not requiring ourselves to widen that. Uh, I, that's just, I'm just not sure how it works, so.
Yeah. And again, the, the, we asked for a cost from the consultant, they'd have to review what all the included is. We know the, um, we're going to have to make sure that the storm drainage is running properly along and getting into the new storm drainage system that they'll be creating, yeah?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, uh, and I, I guess I just want to say, I'm, I fully support us trying to find a way to, uh, widen Cardinal and figure out, uh, a way to address any issues that may come from this development. And I don't think it'd be anybody's surprise, I've said it many times before, when we have these opportunities to grow our city, I don't think we then use existing shortfalls to then turn things down. I think that's a way that we find ways to address whatever issue there is. So if we need to find a way to widen that street from it, I, I think as a council, that's our responsibility to find the funds to do that and not just say, well, we're not widening that street, so we'll turn down, uh, significant development. We've already approved the rezoning of all that land, so any of the, um, traffic concerns, all the, uh, public feedback, we've, we've already gone through that portion of it. So, so now I think it is totally our obligation to make sure that when we do develop, we make the changes to existing infrastructure that, uh, doesn't negatively impact the residents of that area, so, um, Counselor Adams, have my word that when we find whatever the solution is to fix, if there's an issue from this, that we do that. But I think in the meantime, we support what is a pretty good plan for land that we already approved for zoning.
Further comments, questions, statements from council? Seeing and hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Want to oppose? The ayes have it. Uh, Counselor Duron, I think we're at our last item. Back over to you.
Last, uh, last resolution, COS twenty-five dash zero seven seven, whereas an application for a major subdivision was received from Travelers Rest Mini Homes Limited to subdivide a portion of PID number eight three six two nine six, creating seventeen lots, lot twenty-four one to twenty-four seventeen, intended for manufactured homes. The proposed subdivision layout is indicated on preliminary survey plan prepared by Locust Surveys Limited, drawing number two four zero two nine dash P zero one, dated July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. And whereas council granted preliminary subdivision approval for the subdivision noted above, and whereas the developer is requesting the city pay the cost to extend Cardinal Street, street only, from the existing stub of Cardinal Street to the east boundary of the proposed subdivision, proposed Street A, in the amount of fifteen thousand five hundred dollars, see map attached. Uh, be it resolved that council pay the cost to extend Cardinal Street to the east boundary of the proposed subdivision, proposed Street A, in the amount up to fifteen thousand five hundred dollars upon final subdivision approval. This bears the recommendation of the planning board meeting held on July second, two thousand and twenty-five. And I would, uh, once, once more invite a member of council to move the motion. Counselor Morrison, seconded by Deputy Mayor Snow.
Thank you, Counselor Duron. Resolution COS twenty-five dash zero seven seven, moved by Counselor Morrison, seconded by Deputy Snow, is on the floor. Or comments, questions, statements from members of council?
Just one question.
Counselor Duron?
Where it says street only, that's just sort of indicating that we don't have to do sewer or water, just, okay.
Seeing no other comments or questions or statements, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. The resolution is carried. Thank you, Counselor Duron. Thank you, council. Um, with that, we will adjourn our special council meeting for July second, two thousand and twenty-five. We'll move into our committee of the whole meeting. We're here at six forty-three. Um, is council suitable with just continuing as, uh? Everyone's good?
Yeah.
Counselor Adams? Yep?
I'm just wondering, can we move ahead to maybe, um, I know Lori's here. Can we maybe move the agenda around a bit so that...
Um, yeah, we can, we could, uh...
Or is that not, does that not work?
It should be, unless, we can, we can move Lori up when we get to six, if that's, or we can even move up after five. If that's okay. Lori, so we won't keep you long here for too long. We can get through four, four should be pretty quick, and then when we get into those items, we'll just move that up. Uh, five and six are really similar, so. Um, with that, we'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting here at the City of Somerside on July second, two thousand and twenty-five at six forty-three p.m. I'll call for a mover and a seconder to approve the agenda as presented. Uh, Counselor McDougall, second, Counselor Cameron, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Oppo, uh, changes, against, whatever the language is. Anyone against changes or revisions? Seeing, hearing none, we will proceed with the agenda as presented. Any conflict of interest for any member of council, uh, with respect to any item on the agenda here this evening? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move, uh, quickly into the committee reports and recommendations, and, uh, we'll start with, uh, Counselor McDougall, Finance Committee, Counselor.
Uh, thank you, Your Worship. I, uh, we held our, uh, meeting on June twenty-fifth and, uh, dealt with a number of items, and there was one that came, uh, to report here tonight about the vulnerable populations grant application. Uh, council approved twenty-two thousand five hundred in the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six budget for grants to nonprofit organizations that serve as our vulnerable, uh, populations. The grant aims to empower registered not-for-profit organizations and prospective applicants to address the needs of vulnerable populations, including seniors, youth, and those impacted by the high cost of living. The Finance Committee at the last meeting on June twenty-fifth reviewed an application received and, uh, passed a motion to recommend that council award a grant of two thousand five hundred to this nonprofit organization. This will leave, uh, budget remaining of zero for the two thousand and twenty-five, twenty-six year. Uh, it is recommended that the council award the following nonprofit organization with a vulnerable population grant as follows: two thousand five hundred to age-friendly P E I for their eating well on a budget presentation, plus a food hamper for vulnerable seniors. That's, uh, my report.
Thank you, Counselor McDougall. Um, next up is Bylaw Governance Committee, Counselor McCollman.
Well, I feel like I don't have a report again this month, but I know that they're very busy with, you know, a lot of catch-up with a lot of things that they're working on, so we're hoping that sometime in this next month or so, we'll find out, get some information.
Excellent. Thank you, Counselor. Um, Planning Committee, Counselor Duron?
Yeah, okay, so we didn't have a meeting in, uh, what month is it? In June, just due to some, uh, staff abstinence, but, uh, just to, I guess, highlight a number of, uh, topics that are under discussion. Um, the Housing Accelerator Fund Implementation Task Force is something that we have underway, uh, focusing on moving forward the objectives tied to housing supply and delivery. Uh, the Complete Streets Initiative also, uh, remains a, a top priority, uh, as we continue to look at ways to make our roads safer and more accessible for all users, whether they're walking, or cycling, or driving, or, or using what may soon, someday be public transit, or, or, or a higher level of, of that. Um, there's discussions around mobile, mobile home regulations and how best to manage zoning and affordability concerns in that area. Uh, we've also had a recent look at the Parkland Dedication Fund, reviewing its current, uh, balance and exploring how it might be used to support new or improved, uh, green spaces. Uh, the issue of, um, uh, homeless encampments continues to be a, a challenge, and, uh, we're, we're working with partners to explore, um, you know, practical responses and, and to that. Um, in terms of pedestrian safety, staff are reviewing our crosswalk policy, uh, including how locations are selected and prioritized, and, uh, finally, the, uh, speed hump policy is being reviewed. Yes, there's a speed hump, uh, policy, uh, with a focus on traffic calming in residential neighborhoods and how best to respond to community concerns.
Great, thank you, Counselor. Um, Action Plan for Safer Communities, Counselor Adams?
Your Worship, um, we met last week, um, the committee, and we reviewed applicants that had put their name in, um, to sit on the committee, uh, for some public input, and, um, that, and also in the fall, we'll, we'll be going out to, um, some of the, the stakeholders. Um, we just found that right now wouldn't be a good time, maybe to get, um, some students and, um, some other people that we would really think would have some beneficial, like, advice for us, so. Um, and also the crime prevention needs assessment, um, we're just looking at a date with, um, the presenter on that, for him to present to council. Did I miss anything? Ken, Mayor?
Well, nailed it.
Good.
Great, thank you, Counselor. Uh, Parks and Green Space Plan, Counselor Trenton?
Sure, thanks. Just a very short update. Um, we'll be putting out a RFP in the future, and, uh, the survey, if anybody's listening, the Parks and Green Space Survey is still open, and so lovely to hear, um, see the results come in. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Cameron? I know what you're gonna say.
Same thing I said last couple of months. Uh, for both of the committees, we don't have any updates currently, so not much for me right now.
Thank you, Counselor. It being summer and students not being in school. Um, Downtown Transformation Team, Deputy Mayor Snow?
Thank you, Your Worship. So, uh, basically, we're just, uh, waiting for the, uh, meeting of the Implementation Committee, uh, of council to go ahead and then bring those recommendations back to council. Uh, my hope is to have that done, uh, in the next few weeks, as we're getting into the busy time of everybody's year. It's harder and harder to find time to meet, but the plan is to get it done within the next couple of weeks and then bring, uh, those recommendations back to council.
Thank you, Deputy Snow. Uh, Electric Utility Governance Review Committee, Counselor Morrison?
Um, we continue to meet. I think the last meeting was approximately a week ago. Continue to look for a best, uh, path forward, and, and, uh, we've probably got half a dozen different directions we can go in, and, uh, we're kind of educating ourselves a little bit and getting legal opinions and whatnot, and, and try to come up with two or three best practices for maybe moving forward, and when we do that, we'll be back to council with those.
Thank you, Counselor. And then, uh, Counselor Cameron, you touched on the Smart Cities AI initiatives.
Yep, so we are not meeting in July, but we have a meeting coming up in August, and we will continue to move forward from there.
Awesome. Uh, thanks, council. With that, we'll move on to item five slash six. We, as Counselor Adams noted, we have, uh, Director Ellis here with us today on the Somerside Public Art Policy. I think there's no reason why that can't come under the staff reports and recommendations, so we can invite, um, Director Lori up to the mic and, uh, to present the public art policy to council. I'll give just a really quick, they're gray package in here, and it does summarize the process, um, for the development of this. And this has been with, if council remembers, we talked as a council about whether to establish... And this has been with, if council remembers, we talked as a council about whether to establish a formal committee to review the public art policy and development. Council's, uh, decision and direction at that time was to form a working group of counselors, um, and that working group of counselors has been working with, uh, Director Lori, which would come, or...
At the time, I know that we had discussed here, and I, I don't know installations, okay, or, I, I was just curious of mine into the future.
Sort of like when you say public art, they did, in public domains, in that it's creative and fert is, is generally more about a comment on larger community opinions, or, or issues, or things like that, so. So it's more like freedom to viewish, not just in a confined time? Exactly. Sort of thing. Um, and like, uh, the one down at the seafood place, would that be like another public art installation? The... Yeah, the, the mural on, on the side of Summerside, Sifu Supreme. Yeah. And some public art that's out there now are not necessarily originals, um, but they are reproductions made from originals. You know, you might go into a city and you might see, you know, post office boxes wrapped in, in, uh, kind of commercially produced wraps, but they are of, um, works by artists who have made them for the purpose of being out in public. You're welcome.
Uh, we've mentioned having budgeted funds in this year's fiscal year. Is there any current projects underway, or is there anything currently underway or approved that we're moving ahead with? Or already has been done under that fifty thousand allocation, or are we still waiting to spend that fifty thousand?
We're still waiting to spend the, this year's, uh, fifty thousand, and, um, working with the MiGMA community to finalize, uh, a permanent public art piece for Summerside from a MiGMA artist.
Okay.
Yeah, from last year's budget.
Yep.
Yep.
From last year's budget, we're still working on that?
Correct.
So then we have the last year's, so we'll have that art installation, plus the fifty thousand allocated?
Yep.
Okay, perfect, thanks.
I don't see any other comments or questions from, uh, members of council, directors, so, um, take that as a good sign.
Okay.
And, um, the next steps would be then, this would, uh, uh, return to our next council meeting, um, and, uh, to see if council wants to adopt it as a formal policy for the City of Summerside, uh, public art. Great work, it's been excellent, great teamwork, I know there's been a lot of work behind the scenes from a lot of people, and, uh, a lot of input from council as well along the way, and it seems to be that on the public art installation projects that you've initiated in the last eighteen months, uh, the feedback seems to be really positive in the community, and certainly, um, exciting time. So thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Lori?
Yes.
I, uh, I wasn't around for the old-fashioned carnival, but I got some comments on it, that it's probably the best value in Summerside for entertainment, so.
Oh, good.
And, uh, yeah, there was a couple of people that I talked to that, that were there, that was their first time there, and they were blown away with, uh, the carnival and the whole idea of it, so, thank you.
Good, thank you.
Great. Um, with that, we'll move to, our next item, we'll move to five A, which is the Community Park benches. Um, this is a staff report and recommendations following item that was at committee of the whole. Uh, call on, um, the CAO de Rosier to, uh, report back to council.
Uh, thank you, your worship. Um, just a brief summary, um, following up on this particular item. Um, staff have connected with, uh, Public Works, uh, with regards to this year's sort of trial period on the community park benches. Um, staff have indicated that, well, it was fairly minimal in terms of incremental impact from a cost and labor perspective, it was also a fairly, uh, not-so-snowy winter, so the implement, the costs were, weren't all that significant. Um, and I guess what we're recommending is to continue with the, um, trial program this year, um, as it was last year, and perhaps add one or two additional locations, um, and, uh, bring back to council at budget time, sort of a summary of what it costs and, and what it would cost to, you know, do all benches as requested. So I think just an extension of the trial with a bit of an expansion. And we can identify what those expansions are over the next few months before the snow flies. Hopefully not too soon.
Great, thank you, CAO. Any further comments, questions from council on the item? Great, great to see pilot progress continue and grow, uh, as our city does. Um, I know we're bouncing around a little bit, but we're getting straight now, so we'll move to, uh, item six. Six A is election period, uh, bylaw. This is me, actually. Um, I've put this one off for a number of months, but, uh, I thought it'd be good to get on the record here finally. Um, I'm trying to get my pages right. Oh, here we go. Um, so as you see in the package, page twenty-eight, uh, bylaw respecting restrictions on council decision-making during municipal election periods. Uh, the item's pretty, uh, decently set out in the issue. Um, I'll read it, and then if anyone has any feedback. I would say, too, at the front end, have shared this draft with, um, uh, legal services internally at the city. My request to council would be that, um, this bylaw go to Bylaw Governance Committee with a review by legal to then return, uh, to council if council wants to adopt it. Simply the issue is city council meetings occurred during the municipal election. Uh, I did notice this when I was running for, uh, this position, and that, that kind of inspired this, uh, where there was a highly contentious item that came before council, and I, to be honest, I thought it was somewhat unfair to put that on council in the middle of an election period, um, for all of the obvious reasons. Um, so this policy proposal would ensure fairness, transparency, and accountability during municipal election periods and during the time in between the municipal election writ date and the swearing-in date, so that would generally be, uh, November. Um, this policy would prevent outgoing councils from initiating or making decisions that could bind, uh, future councils, uh, influence the election outcome, or appear to favor incumbents, all of which undermine the integrity of the democratic process. I don't think I've seen that ever here in Summerside, but, um, it holds us to a higher standard. Uh, the proposed bylaw would improve resident confidence in the integrity of council and promote a greater sense of transparency and sound transition between councils, recognizing that even if, um, a mayor and council returns, uh, for another term, it is still a new council. Um, section seventy-four-two of the MGA authorizes an outgoing council between the, uh, November election and December to complete transactional items already started. Um, the proposed bylaw would remain compliant with the MGA. So, uh, essentially, during an election writ period, so the period in which the election campaign is underway, and then within the period between a, uh, the election and the swearing-in of a council, uh, council's work would be reduced to, I think the definition in here is, is, uh, there's a definition here, uh, major, no major decisions would be permitted. Major decision here is anything that would commit the city to a new policy program or initiative, or our created capital expenditure contract or project not previously approved in the budget, um, or approving the sale, acquisition of municipal assets valued more than fifty thousand dollars. One of the comments from, uh, legal was to perhaps put in some exceptional language around there to give the CAO some discretion, um, on certain matters. The example raised was, look, if in a November, in this period, there was a federal funding program that was, uh, only open for a small period, a small window, there may be a time where the CAO would say, look, we would make an exception to this because we want to make sure we receive, uh, additional funds for the benefit of the city. But overall, it is to try and, um, take any politics out of the council chambers, uh, for future councils down the road. So if anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, I'd, uh, be interested if council was, be open to sending this to committee and to legal to come back. Look at the nodding heads? Okay, great, thanks. All right, so we'll send that to Bylaw Governance Committee with a review from, uh, internal, external legal, and, uh, see what they think. Um, next item up here is, we're at item six C, which is new crosswalks, form attached. Councillor Cameron, uh, Councillor Cameron, I'll hand it over to you, and I think there is some staff information on the crosswalks as well, so, Councillor Cameron.
Great. Um, myself and Councillor Adams, uh, had a discussion around budget time or about crosswalks, the need for a couple, uh, and I know that there is many needs for different crosswalks around the city, uh, but specifically, the two of us brought up two specific crosswalks, um, and they were, uh, addressed to a certain extent, and said we would circle back, and we never really heard anything back on that. Uh, and now we are talking, you know, what, about a few months ago, when we did our State of the City, that there are new crosswalks going in, we had asked to be, uh, updated on that somewhat informally, and it never really came, so we thought we'd do a more formal process to see, uh, which crosswalks were being examined and where we fell with the two crosswalks that we, um, had brought up at budget time. And I don't know if Councillor Adams wants to add anything to that or not.
I think that's, that's good, it was just minutes of clarification on where we are with, with those two. There are areas that, uh, they're sort of difficult areas. Um, I, I realize that, like, staff-wise, for the installation part, but we also have to realize if staff are thinking it might be hard to install, then think how hard it is for the pedestrian to actually cross at that point, so.
I guess, if, I mean, specifically, I asked about the Hunter Curry, that area, um, to see if that was manageable, one, because the people who live in that little horseshoe, um, don't have access to a sidewalk, uh, nor is there really a, um, shoulder for them to walk on to get to the closest sidewalk, so they are gonna trapped in their subdivision, with having to go onto Central Street to access the closest sidewalk, and there is no crosswalk leaving, um, their neighborhood. So that was specifically the one I had asked about, um, but if there's an update, that'd be great.
And just if anybody's watching, the one that I had asked about was for Starlight on Water Street East, 'cause, um, Starlight is on the opposite side of the sidewalk, so.
Thank you, yes, so, uh...
You want to go first?
Just a brief summary, um, based on the State of the City, um, numbers, uh, there were seven crosswalks cited in, in the State of the City address. There's actually twenty, but there's seven locations, because there's intersections where there's multiple crosswalks, but we'll go with seven locations of crosswalks, um, and they all currently, as part of the budget process, are in the east-west housing corridor. So at this point, what we understand is coming out of the budget piece is that we would review both Starlight, Hunter, and now subsequently, uh, the Shipyard request for crosswalks through tech services. They've commenced design, uh, review, and they've commenced feasibility review, and the goal will be to bring back to council, uh, both costing and feasibility for those three current crosswalks that are under review, um, and council can make a decision at that time if they want to proceed with, with all or any of those crosswalks.
Councillor Cameron?
Well, of course, sir.
You can go first.
I'll sit first. The, the only thing, I, I, could we get the, uh, recent request for the, and it's one that we talked about previously, but I, I do believe it's a reasonable request, would be the crosswalk, um, heading towards Spinnaker's Landing, that we already have the cutoff and trail system to, uh, just seems like a natural fit, and I know there was some feedback already from tech services, but, um, to my points earlier, I think that's something that we can find ways to make it work engineering-wise and whatever, what has to happen, but I, I think it's a natural connection for our downtown and what is a huge revitalization of Spinnaker's Landing recently and, and that area, so.
CAO and Councillor Cameron?
Just to respond to that, I think it's important, too, that, that some of these crosswalks have, the requests have been kind of kicked around for a number of years, in some cases, um, and, you know, tech services will do an initial review and recommend that they don't necessarily meet design or engineering standards as a result of a number of factors, whether that's proximity to intersections, proximity to other crosswalks in the area, um, and then the request continues to come back. So, don't be surprised if, if the feasibility comes back from tech services again suggesting similar concerns. Um, council has the authority to override those concerns and move forward with a crosswalk, noting those, those design concerns. I think net of a policy, which I think Councillor, uh, Chair of Planning Committee, had mentioned that, you know, without, without a policy kind of driving where we're putting crosswalks and why, we're gonna continue to kind of banter these around, so we need to kind of all agree to some standards and then move from there. In the meantime, while that policy work is ongoing, we'll review those now four crosswalk areas, which is Heather Mois Drive, uh, Shipyard, Hunter Avenue, and, um, Starlight. So those are the ones that are under review, coming back with feasibility and costing. Hopefully that clarifies the status.
Um, I just have a bit of concern because I, so I asked about this quite a long time ago, outside of budgetary. Um, I got a cost, and then at budget, I was given a much, much, much different cost, uh, and that's how this entire conversation came about, is that we were going to get the cost before budget was over, and that cost never came back for myself and Councillor Adams, and we were looking at the difference between five thousand dollars and twenty-eight thousand dollars, uh, and I just would hope that we're not going to continue to kick this down the road longer and longer and longer, um, when the two of us had been under the assumption that our crosswalks, uh, were going to be put into this budget, this year, uh, and now we are finding out that that is not the case at all, and I completely, completely agree that a policy is great to have, and we should, but there's also some one-offs that tend to happen, um, that don't always fit into a policy. And I do very much feel that Hunter and Curry and Jardine, um, they, they, they are trapped, but they are too close to the next crosswalk, if you consider what tech services is going to tell, because I've already spoken to tech services about it, and that is the information I got back, uh, and not everything needs to be black and white all the time, there sometimes needs to be a little bit of a gray area, uh, so when we are going forward with the policy, I hope that the wording will kind of reflect that, that there are times where, uh, special circumstances have to be taken into consideration.
So JP, what are you thinking for like a timeline when we could, like, have this back?
Um, in terms of kicking it down the road, I, when I learned of this issue of there being a potentially unbudgeted expectation for two crosswalks, I instructed tech services to commence the review and the costing. They responded and said, we need to get through tender season, which I'm pretty sure I outlined to council. They've now completed their fourteenth and final tender, so they have moved into the design phase. Um, and when I say design phase, it's more of a, the design phase does include the costing and the feasibility, and I've instructed them to come back with costing, whether or not they agree with the feasibility or not, or they recommend it or not, so council will be able to ponder the costs along with the tech services recommendations all at the same time. What I'd like to say to be ready for July monthly, yes, but it's probably more likely the August committee, still presents lots of time for council to consider and construction items to be included. In terms of the range between costing, I can't speak to the past, but I, I think until a full review is done, um, it's difficult for staff to give exact pricing, like, in some instances, they require flashing beacons, and other areas, there's sidewalk extensions or curb cuts, et cetera, so all those things have to get factored in to bring back a cost, which, as I mentioned, we will bring one back, and my hope is August committee, and I'll keep council updated on that work as it continues on.
Perfect.
Yeah, perfect. I think that's very fair. Thank you.
I just have a quick question for Chair Planning Board. I do wonder if these things can come at the same time, so I don't know if you, when you said August, I don't know if, like, if we did this in September or something, so that we could actually get, because again, we may end up in this situation, we have four of these, and then we're talking about the policy at, might as well bring them both together. I don't know if, uh, Planning Board could move that crosswalk item up. If it came September or October, it's still well in advance of budget time, um, and then they could come with a rough policy, even at least, and then the examples, um, because I think the reason why we tried to establish the policy is so we were trying to reduce the one-offs, but if they could come together at the same time, if council were open for that, or if they want to do the four?
Yeah, I was just to, to respond to that, I'll make sure that our, our July, uh, Planning Board Committee meeting, uh, I'll make sure that that date is marked for crosswalk policy discussion, so we'll make sure to include it in our, on our agenda.
So Councillor Cameron and Adams, are you all right if it's just not later than October, just to give us enough, sometimes like give people enough time, um, but try and accelerate and do them together? Is that okay from a staff perspective? Okay.
Are you doing anything before you get the policy? Or if it's October, it's no sense of talking about it again for this year, but, uh, you know, if it's whatever area it is, does that mean we're, we're not doing any crosswalks until you bring the policy back?
No, well, no, 'cause the, as I understand, it sounds like there was some confusion through budget, I think, um, and we can talk about how that emerges separately since those discussions were in camera, but, um, it sounds like from a staff perspective, there are twenty, now I understand the twenty with the four on the corner. Um, seven locations, four budgeted crosswalks, and the ones that have been listed here are unbudgeted, so that either would come in next year's budget or as an... So that either would come in next year's budget or as an unbudgeted item. Generally, it's probably even better it a little bit later because sometimes we have a more understanding of what the budgetary flexibility there is usually by September. But not kicking it down the road, so we don't deal with it, so. That would give Tech Services time also and the policy folks to put something together and bring it. And they can at least travel together.
Sounds good.
Cool. Great. Thank you, Councilors Adams, Cameron for bringing that forward. We are into CAO Updates, item seven, I think. Sorry, my page is a mess here today for some reason, all kinds of to-do things. Yep. CAO Updates, item seven, 7A.
Just very briefly, we recently began summarizing some of the work coming out of the in-camera sessions into the public forum. So there are two that I'll discuss tonight. The first one is Mother's Antiques Property. Essentially, staff presented in-camera the results from the RFP scoring for the former Mother's Antiques property. Council gave direction to staff to notify the successful bidder and the unsuccessful bidders and commenced discussion and negotiations and worked towards a drafted development agreement. This work is underway, and staff will be back in front of council, I hope, in August committee with a summarized development agreement and with hopes of moving that forward. We may be in a position to do so at July monthly, but we'll see where that goes from here. Questions on that one? Management Employee Benefits. Staff presented to council some proposal, some proposed changes to the incremental savings that we've received from our third-party employee insurance provider. Staff recommended that the incremental savings be reallocated to the employee and the employer cover both sides of the benefit as a means of a retention and recruitment tool. And this is for City Summerside Management Employees. Council gave an endorsement for staff to proceed with that. And I will say that management employees are very thankful to council for this endorsement, and it's been very well received at the staff level.
Any comments, questions? Great. Thank you, council. So we move now into our in-camera. We could take a brief break. I know we have Tony Davis, CBC, here. Tony, are you waiting to speak to anyone in particular? Just for, again, for time, because we'll probably be another 30, 40 minutes? You guys want to take five minutes? Okay, we'll take a five-minute recess, and then we'll return in-camera. And we're going to start with the item C, which is the...